I'd like to call to order the August 15, 2019, meeting of the City of Sebastian Planning and Zoning Commission. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. A roll call, please.
Mr. Roth.
Here.
Ms. Cottenberg.
Here.
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Mr. Reyes.
Here.
And that's all we have.
Fortunately, we have a quorum because oddly enough, this is an important meeting. For announcements this evening, Mr. Quizzlebosh is excused, and Mr. Simmons and Mr. Huguen are all excused. Al, I saw him earlier today, and he didn't say anything, but Mr. Maude would be voting as an alternate, but he also is not here. So this is the whole party, folks.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
(laughing).
Yes.
You have all had the opportunity to read the minutes from our last meeting.
No.
Pardon?
No.
You haven't.
I haven't received any.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, I just got mine in the mail today, so the mail might be packed up unless...
If you've had a chance to review them, we can put that on the next agenda and catch up with those.
Thank you. We will...
Need a motion.
Do we need a motion for that?
Since it is an agenda item, I would go ahead and entertain a motion to defer the approval of the minutes for August 15 to the next meeting.
I'll make a motion that we move the approval of the August 15 Commission meeting minutes to our next regularly scheduled Plan Commission meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So be it. No quasi-judicial hearing this evening, so we'll move to unfinished business.
Good evening. I'm Ken Kogor, the city's Chief Financial Officer. It's also clumsy. So about this time every year, we come before the Planning Commission and try to brief you on what's in the city's capital improvement plan. So this covers the, actually, the next six years and outlines all the projects that we have in our plans to address over that time period. I had some question about a change in our organization. We are, and that's why I passed out to you, a updated organizational chart. If I could just briefly point out to you that most of the departments are the same as you probably historically have seen. We've got the administrative services, the police, the building, community development, and golf course, I would say, you know, are pretty much status quo. We have opened up a position of city engineer, and that city engineer has yet to be hired, but the intent is that that position would handle the roads division and the stormwater Now, public facilities catches off just about all the other divisions that used to be in what we call public works. So public facilities will have facilities maintenance, fleet management, cemetery, and airport under his direction. We created a new title and a new department called Leisure Services. Leisure Services takes over the parks, facilities, and recreation programs. Used to be called Parks and Recreation, but the Leisure Services is more of a current handle for organizational definitions than other cities for the same function for Parks and Recreation. Hopefully, all the presentations and the documents that I sent to you had the correct nomenclature and called it Leisure Services. It is Leisure Services, but I hope you understand that was the intent.
May I ask a question before we actually get into this on your flow chart?
Sure.
The city engineer, is there any timeframe as far as the hiring of the city engineer that you know of?
We've, I'm actually on this as part of the selection committee, and we've interviewed about, I can't remember if it's four or five applicants, and just weren't satisfied that they were a good fit for our organization. So we continued to search and hope people will, you know, put in their application for us. We think the money is a fair offer, but it also draws mostly applicants, it seems, that have a wealth of experience, but they're right at the end of their career, or they're coming back out from retirement.
Mm-hmm.
And we really want to get someone that's going to be, you know, expected to stay a number of years and...
Right.
You know, maybe it's too much to hope for, but hopefully, there's a candidate out there that's going to blow us away when they come in for any interviews. But we are, you know, we're pursuing it as fast as possible. That's our intent. The funds are available.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kogor.
You're welcome.
May I ask a question in regards to that? The city does have consulting engineers right now, right?
Yes, we have, of course, we...
That was through a recent...
For major projects, we go out and do a competitive search for the which firm, but we do have ongoing...
That's been working out fairly well for you guys.
Yes, we've got, I forget if it's two firms that are on call, and basically, if we've got a smaller project, then we call on them to give us a quotation and, you know, and appreciate the price, and if it seems right, we can go ahead and proceed with them without a full competitive selection, which sometimes takes months.
Okay. Thank you.
I think what you're getting at is it's not, it's not a crisis situation that's being managed very capably right now with the on-call consultants.
Yeah, I would say, you know, as far as stormwater goes, we've got some very experienced people that are acting as director. In the roads division, our public facilities manager has, was previously charged with that, and he's pursuing, you know, the paving plan that we've had to consult and prepare. And so he's still managing that. It's just that there's so much on him that part of the reason of breaking off to having a city engineer was not only the value of having that kind of person on staff, but also to make sure that those areas get the best attention that we can afford to provide for it, so.
Good luck. Find somebody then, right?
Everybody familiar with these topics? I couldn't call this a town.
Yeah.
Okay, so I gave you a packet that's got a lot of detailed information, probably more than you can absorb just by a quick perusal, so I want to, with my slides, to highlight for you the major projects or the major issues that we plan to address. Of course, we do want to hear your comments or suggestions. We would take your suggestions to heart, I'm sure, because you look at it from a planning, a visionary-type approach more so than perhaps on staff that we do, because we look at what we can afford with the resources we have and, you know, just prioritize based on what we can accomplish. But I think your role in the process is really to have that vision, you know, to look and see if we really are spending the money in the proper buckets to make this a better place, or at least keep it the way it is. So at the end of the night, I'd like for you to consider a motion to actually recommend the proposed CIP to the council. You could modify or make comments as part of that motion, but this is your chance to speak out on it. So we've got the Budget Review Committee that already has done not only looking at the capital improvement program, but they looked at our operating budget for next year, you know, added their financial expertise to the discussions. We are scheduled for the City Council Review of the Budget next Wednesday night. I'll kind of go through everything I've covered in summary form with the Budget Committee. And then we have the public hearings on September 16 and 25. That'll be the first and second public hearing that the law requires us to have. So into the actual contents of the program, we are spending $940,000 over the next six years on MIS, or Management Information Services, information technology, and auto-visual-type facilities. So most of that money is coming out of DSTs, which is, you know, doesn't affect our taxpayers out of the general fund revenues. But we are finding, you know, a lot of publicity has been given about security in different cities and how they've been hacked or their system invaded, so we are aggressively trying to keep up with that, whatever technology needs that we have to stay on top of that and not let it happen to us, hopefully. Community development, the only actual item that we listed in the CIP was a plotter and an upgraded scanner that will be in next year. Community development also encompasses the CRA funds. Most of those funds are being used for landscaping, special events, design and sewer connection grants. There's some activity in the CRA from projects that we've already established that are mostly funded from DST or local option gas tax monies, things that are specifically enabled and from that source of funds to be used. But frankly, the amount of revenue we get into the CRA fund is not really sufficient to accumulate a large amount of money at this point. So we'll continue to supplement, I guess, activities in the CRA with those other sources as we can. Police Department, almost $3 million over the six years, mostly for their vehicle replacement program. They've got some required radio system upgrades, and, you know, we are tied into the county's emergency 911 services, so we have to, when they want to change or upgrade, we're pretty much a part of that and have to participate. They've got the evidence compound out at the public works facility that, I'm sorry, at the airport, and they want to make sure that those, primarily vehicles, that they secure as evidence in a case, we have a responsibility to take care of those. We can't just let them out in the elements to deteriorate in any way. We've got to do something to make sure that's covered. For roads, we've got over $3 million in the next six years, mostly using discretionary sales tax funds and the local option gas taxes. We're trying to keep up with the road program, but when we actually got some bids on our street paving pricing, it looks like we may be somewhat short in the meet in the short term, but I'm hopeful that we can continue allocating sufficient monies to make progress on the road situations. With public facilities, one thing the public facilities director is doing is he's working with a design-build firm that we competitively selected to relocate the public works compound to the airport. We had some money budgeted in the current year. We've got another piece coming in 2020 and a final piece in 2021. So we're actually allocating $6.8 million. We are hoping through the, working with the design and those folks, we've had some meetings with them to value engineer in a sense the projects so that we, you know, get the kind of facility that we want, but also one that's within, well within this budget amount. So I think we'll find there. Our leisure services, we've got the pickleball courts, as you know, I'm sure that is, are under construction, but we've got some additional funds in next year for additional landscaping and lighting for that facility. Security also comes up in this case with adding some security cameras, and by 2025, we actually have spent over $600,000 on different park facilities, and part of that is we're going pretty much one park a year. We're going in and making sure that the all-inclusive concept is woven into those facilities and any upgrades that are necessary. So we've got quite an investment coming there. Most of that, most all of that is the recreation impact fees. Stormwater, we are hopeful. This has been the lead on working with FEMA for a grant for the Stonecroft area, and the latest we hear is it's encouraging that we would receive some funding for that, so we've got our matching share budgeted out of stormwater fees. Similar to the recreations and parks and recreation, we've got some swale work and other improvements projects, pretty much scheduled out one a year over the timeframe so that we can address some of those areas that are in worse need of being addressed. We have $500,000 that we just set aside should we have some of the seawalls along the canals to, that are failing, and we have a responsibility, you know, should we have a responsibility to address some of those, then we've got some source of funding that would be available should that come up. I think you're aware that we're just taking a wait-and-see kind of approach, and, you know, as situations come up where they are perhaps failing, and it's determined to be our responsibility that we can react to those. In our enterprise funds, the golf course, we've got a couple of items of interest, probably $60,000 is going towards rerouting the hookup for the water service at the clubhouse. That facility currently has a line that runs like through the driving range and from the other side, and we're trying to bring it off of brush-foot drive so it'll be more direct and hopefully not have as many problems with breakage and failing water lines. We figure the Ts need to start to be renovated, and we've allocated, I believe it's $50,000 for each T to go in and upgrade it. So there's, that's over the next three years that we would hopefully address all of those. Lots of things happening at the airport, another hangars in the works. We've got another, actually, half of the cost expected to build Hangar D was budgeted in this year. The remaining half is next year, and that's primarily funded by grant funds. The rest of the matching funds are coming from the discretionary sales tax accounts. Out, I believe it's in the sixth year, we've got $2 million allocated for the west access road. All we had in the building fund is a vehicle. That was actually in this current year budget and wasn't spent. It's designated for an additional inspector. To hopefully kind of pull it all together in a snapshot, over the next six years, we've got $23 million of different categories for projects in the city. You can see on this chart that over $6 million is stormwater-related improvements. We've got the public works facility compound, got over $3 million for road improvements. Between those three items is the bulk of the funds that would be spent. And when you see the funding sources, thank goodness for the discretionary sales tax monies, because that's almost, that's actually over half of the funding that we expect to require over the next six years. There's a good portion from grant monies, and of course, local option gas taxes, and the stormwater fund and those fees. That pretty much wraps up my summary of a quick review of the program. I'd be glad to take any questions or hear your comments or suggestions.
Okay. Thank you. We'll start here. Mr. Reyes?
A couple of questions. The golf Ts, wasn't the golf course just redone not long ago?
Actually, the greens.
Oh, it's just the greens?
There's a major project on the greens, but in this current year, I think they took one of the Ts and revamped it.
So it wasn't a full renovation when they did it last time? It looked like it was when you go by.
It was focused on the irrigation system and the greens, but not the actual Ts in those previous projects.
Okay. The public facilities compound that we're trying to build on the airport property?
Yes.
The current property, we own that? Where our compound is now?
Where it's located now, yes.
What is the plans to do with that piece of property when you relocate? Is that gonna, can those, can that be sold and those funds be used? This is a really big cost for this facility.
That's our expectation, but you understand by the time the facility is constructed, we're at least, at least a year out and perhaps a year and a half.
Does the city have plans for that property?
Nothing that I've heard of.
No vision for it at all right now, so we're going to just move our public works facility. Is it not working out there right now? Are we overgrown it?
There's advantages to being at the airport location-wise, as well as the technology and the way it's laid out. If we're starting from scratch, obviously, we can make a more efficient type facility. To, going back to your question as far as how we would use the current property, I really haven't heard any kind of definite plans, but I'm just anticipating, it's not likely we can use those sale proceeds to pay for the construction, because those guys build it and be paid for it. We'll have to be relocating everybody and getting set up and get them out of the old facility.
Okay. It doesn't seem like we're, my opinion, doesn't seem like we're spending enough on stormwater projects. These paving road projects, do they usually include the swales, don't they?
They, the contractor and the way we do our bidding for the roadwork, they take, I think it's like the, I'm trying to think how many feet on each side of the road, that they would take care of that, but if, you know, associated with that is sometimes there would be a swell or piping or something that would have to be handled through a different contract and then using stormwater fees to...
That's my point. We are not spending a lot on stormwater, and I know we have a new stormwater tax that we all pay now.
We did increase the fees, and it is providing some additional funding.
Storms are at our coast here. The storms are right there waiting, and we got lucky this time. Our swales are still overgrown. I don't know about a recent contractor that was doing the work. I'm not sure what's going on with the swales, the cleanups. I think the only swales that are clean are the ones that their own residents are taking care of. It's not being done enough. And I see we're spending all this money on this other facility and not a lot on stormwater projects at all, and I think stormwater is a big event coming our way. The seawall repair, that doesn't include anything along the river, does it?
No, it's probably bad terminology, because it's really the bulkheads on the canals.
Yeah, that's, so, I mean, we have sea-level rise coming our way, and we're not, I know there's probably an engineering house would be looking at that kind of stuff, but that's, those are my points, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Roth?
Question about, back up in the early part of the discussion, you talked about under the general government funding, there's a note about remote access firewall for expenditure next year, and you touched on it, and I didn't catch everything you said. There's $40,000 budgeted for next year, but what are we doing now? I didn't see anything in those descriptions there that would tell me there was some action being taken to protect the city from ransomware. It's been kind of rampant, and that's a big concern that I have, just seeing what's going on, and they seem to be picking on every different size of government and thinking that whichever one looks potentially vulnerable, they attack, and you don't even know it's coming.
It is very, very widespread. It's scary, actually.
Is there anything, I don't see anything in the budget here that indicates we're spending any money on that.
Yeah, I think some of the descriptions probably are purposely vague, like on the network infrastructure.
That was the one I was looking at, network infrastructure, this, you know, $30,000 a year. Well, I can understand why it's going to be vague, but if that's where you feel that funds are coming from to protect the city.
Well, I think the other thing is that there's only so much that some of the hardware can take care of. You know, many of the instances that have occurred have been because somebody opened up an email that was...
Human error, yes.
And we're trying to, in fact, we had a little test about a month ago where we created an email that was supposedly from me and that they should contact, you know, click the link. And for the most part, we had people calling, is this really you? You know, is this valid? And I clicked the link. We had very, very few. I think we did have several that did. So this, these are the kind of, and we're doing, going to seminars, we're keeping up to date on other places' experiences, and a lot of it is just pure training, just to, for the users, you know, our employees, to be careful. Like I say, there's only so much technology can do for you if somebody is just going to be haphazardly opening up an email or following a link without really knowing that it's valid. You know, every time we get an email now, if it comes from an outside source, there's a little message across the top.
Correct.
You know, this is coming from an outside source, be careful. You know, if you don't know it, you call the company or whoever's represented. You know, if you don't know it, you call the company or whoever's represented, or you try to verify it, you know, some other fashion rather than just clicking on the links.
That's what concerns me, these horror stories about different cities that have been held hostage, in other words blackmail.
Yeah.
I didn't see us get into a business like that.
Yeah, we're going through a lot of training on that, and it's just, I mean, we're restricting Wi-Fi to most of our employees there, so it's, it's a big deal to everybody.
Yeah.
It can cripple a small business immediately, so this is in the city too, so.
We are trying to be vigilant.
We are, these have been held hostage, I think.
Yeah?
Yes, and they paid, and they paid the ransom.
Yeah.
Of course, you know, we also pay attention to our backup facilities. We've got several of our applications on the cloud now so that, you know, we've got less, we've got ways to recover, hopefully, from most instances, but it could still be a tragic kind of occurrence if it should happen.
I like the training idea.
Well, we're trying to emphasize that.
You just hope someone doesn't have a bad day and not think about it and have something else on their mind and click, and that's...
Accident, yeah.
That would be a big...
I noticed that warning has come up because of my correspondence for the police department and the neighborhood watch program. It always pops up right away. And of course, it also says it's public now, public information, so it's a reminder. And I know all the officers that I communicate with, they see that right away. And don't send anything big, no pictures.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm thinking even that message, we probably need to change it up, maybe change the color or something, because you do get kind of mesmerized after a while and you just know that's...
All the red.
We're trying to focus on that.
Yeah, well, that, that answers my question, and I think you're right, that some of that's kind of obscured in some of the descriptions, and I...
Somewhat in our operating budget, there's probably some things that are...
And there's flexibility, too. So I just wanted to make sure, because of what is going on. I had another question, it's not a big expenditure, but I was just curious, and on the public facilities department, the bench of seats and monuments, I was just wondering, that's in the planning stages, $20,000 for next year. Do they look at things like that, and maybe this is beyond what your knowledge would cover, as far as putting them in spots where they're, the parks are highly used to improve them?
The 20,000, okay, yeah, that's, really came from the Parks and Recreation Committee. They were kind of frustrated because something would come up that they'd maybe see needed to be repaired or improved on a park, and this was to say, we've got, we've got four zones, so the understanding that we have with the Parks and Rec Committee, 5,000 can be spent in any of the four zones if there's a need to replace some of the equipment. It can't really be operational or just a normal maintenance-type activity, but if it's, you know, a need to develop during the year, that they've got some source of money there to react to it in a faster fashion. This last year, we had actually two of the scoreboards at Barbara Street. They, they were broken, it was expensive to do a repair, so we did use recreation impact fees and that, this particular account, to be able to jump on it, we worked and actually got some donations from the sports associations to come up with the money to actually replace those, which is also an upgrade, if you understand it, because of the advances in technology since the time they were originally put in, so.
Well, there was one in front of my house, in the Easy Street Park, the lake, where they tried to steal it. They took it apart at night and laid it down like they were gonna take it. Maintenance was very kind to put it back together for the, for the lady whose son's memorial was on it, so those are very special to those people. I remember when there was none there, and there's probably five on our lake now, and they're used constantly. There is the one right in front of my house, the mother and father visit religiously every, every weekend, clean it up, because the ducks like them, too. But we like them, makes a nice place for people to sit, so.
I like to see that. Thank you. One other question I had is in the leisure services department, or former Parks and Recreation, the community center offices, I'm, what I'm guessing is that because of the possible expansion in that area with staff, there is more meeting room or office required? Is that, where is this headed?
I recently got more information on that, and I think what we hope to do is carve out some of the existing facilities, some, an office area. At one point, I thought it was gonna be a separate facility, but I'm probably wrong on that, but they've got an engineer looking at it and evaluating if, you know, what can be done there to make some improvement.
Well, I, I think it's great. I really like the fact that the city jumped ahead and called it Leisure Services because that's really, tells people more, it's more of how you could benefit, not what we are offering, and I think it's a great idea, and, you know, expanding the staff and putting someone, you know, there that's really gonna take charge of it and promote it. Because we have a lot of nice parks, that's for sure.
You'll have a hard time changing that. I see you still use Parks and Recs. It's tough to get rid of that, for years it's been Parks and Recs, but Leisure Services, that's a cool name.
Soul folks are hard to change sometimes, change.
That was it, as far as my question.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
I don't really have any questions. I just want to commend Mr. Kilgore's, as usual, you give a good presentation, let us know what's in the capital improvement budget, things of this nature, so I'm, thank you for that.
I would offer to, if you ever have any individual questions about what's going on, I don't know, but I know people that do, so we can maybe get you an answer.
See, I have just a couple of questions, I think, they might be questions. I love the term Leisure Services, it makes me think of someone bringing me a cucumber sandwich and a glass of iced tea. Which I would love.
Little cupper, please, right?
That's it. What time is that served?
Do you know how much time we have left on the CRA? I know that that has a sunset for it, and...
You're catching me off guard, ma'am.
Sorry.
But the last update when we brought the triangle in was 44? That right, I think? And we can go 40 to 60 years, depending on, on what we want to do, so. I believe it's about 44.
Okay.
I'm guessing off the top of my head, but it sounds about right, doesn't it, Ken?
Sounds about right to me, yes.
Okay, that answers, that answers that question. I'm really happy to see a set aside for the seawalls because it will come about, and I, I'm glad to see that there's a set aside there. That's a great, great plan. I am assuming that Leisure Services, there was talk about having a Parks master plan and Leisure Services, I am assuming is part of that joining of efforts to create a grown-up plan. Okay, that's...
And to answer that, if you recall, the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council assisted us, was it last year, I believe, in updating our comprehensive plan for the recreation and open space and creating the whole interactive map. And so that's laying in wait when we go to update, I'm sorry, the comprehensive plan, you all will be seeing that.
Okay, great. I do have one other question, actually, one other question and one comment. I'll get to the comment first. Since we are to be the visionaries, when the, that triangle of land on, between eastbound and westbound, 512, becomes available, I do have some visions for it, just in case anybody wants to know. I have ideas, and then, pardon me?
Yeah, those are.
I know, but I'm saving them for the time when it's appropriate. And then I do have a question because of other things that we are working on, and I asked Lisa earlier today if anybody knew, what, can you tell me what the average city employee who is like a daily worker, do you know what they hire in at, on an average? An approximate?
I hate to speak out of turn on that, and I don't know firsthand.
Okay, you can answer that question for me another time, then. It's like, thank you so much, your report is very concise and I love it. Thank you.
I do want to point out that when, you can look at this year's budget right online, and then if you look, perhaps, let's just say, in the, in the Leisure Services portion, excuse me, of the budget, it will list how many workers under whatever titles, and then it'll give the, the amount that is budgeted for those four workers. You can kind of get a good idea if you look at the budget and look into the individual departments. You can kind of get a good, rough idea.
Okay, and I should probably explain then that my concern is not with how much money we are being paid, but with the affordability of the housing that is available in our city for the people who work in our city. That concerns me, and I think it's something that should concern those of us who are on this committee moving forward, okay? Other than that, I have nothing else, and would therefore thank you again and ask for a motion.
Chairman, I move that we, I move that the proposed capital improvement program be recommended to the city council with no changes.
Seconded. Wholeheartedly. Good job.
Voice vote, please, I mean, yeah, call for a vote, my name.
Mr. Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Cottonburg?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you, thank you again.
Thank you so much for your work.
Okay, we have no public? Isn't that odd? No new business? Commissions matters? Commissioner matters?
Yes, I bring up the, the lack of not receiving again a packet that was supposedly emailed, and I know we talked about it earlier, it was supposed to be addressed, but this seems to be a recurring problem. I feel totally unprepared for tonight, so I, I don't know what can be done. When they were delivered to our homes, we never had a problem, we had plenty of time to, you know, review. Certainly, like most of us like to do, if there's something coming up where we need to go drive to, to review something, it can't be done if we don't know what it's gonna be. But anyway.
Would you like to discuss it now? I was gonna bring it up during staff matters, but we could discuss it now if we, would you mind?
Lisa and I had a little conversation earlier in the day about this, so go for it.
I was, I was prepared to bring it up under staff matters because, right, exactly, and it appears to be a reoccurring theme, and this just cannot be. I mean, we need to have you informed. So there's several ways that we reach out to you, we email you, but we also realize that a lot of you may not have the printer capabilities that, that allow you to print them out, and if you're old-fashioned like me, you like to print it out and write all over it. So we realize that, but we won't stop that mode. So you always have it electronically, okay? That is always at your convenience, or at your disposal, I should say. Mail does not seem to be working very well. I know that two individuals are saying they're, they're getting, they're receiving the packages after the meeting. We certainly cannot have that happen, so we are going to discontinue the mail. We are not going to mail these out any longer. We also know that when we have large packages, we do hand-deliver them to your doorsteps. Please be aware, that takes an hour to an hour and a half of my staff's time to do that. The other option is that come Friday morning, these packages will be sitting and waiting for you in the city hall, so we can make that arrangement for you. So again, we are not going to mail them out anymore, that's obviously not working and it's a waste of money. We will email, we will continue to email just to make sure that you have these documents. We can deliver them, but they can also be available at city hall, so what's your pleasure?
I'd suggest, I too did not, I didn't even get it in the mail yet today, but I would suggest, you know, Friday morning, if the packets are ready, send an email out and say, if you don't contact us by noon, it'll be out, it'll be delivered. And that would give, because I'm around and I, I can understand, I know I'm one of the furthest ones south, I can stop in and pick it up, I don't mind doing that. I like to have the paper copy, because there were 57 pages when I printed out Ken's report. Not that I'm blaming you for that, but it was well detailed and I spent a lot of time looking over it, but that might be an idea, is, you know, send an email Thursday sometime and say, they'll be ready between whatever, and if you don't contact us by noon, it will be delivered. And that would mean that if I want to pick it up, I gotta get down here by noon.
Well, and we are attempting to save on resources and be good environmental stewards, so we have begun printing everything out, you know, back and front, and if, by eliminating, you know, duplication, I mean, if we deliver them or if they're ready for you at the city hall, that's your packet.
Correct.
So bring it with you, you know, I mean, you didn't receive it, sir, so I understand you couldn't bring it with you, and that's, that's really unacceptable, and we, we have got to do better, and I do apologize. I mean, again, you have it electronically, but I do understand that that's, that is an issue.
I'll make a comment as far as picking it up, that's, for me, that's impossible. I'm not here during the day, I'm up in Melbourne, city hall's not open on the weekend, so that leaves me no alternative.
That's correct. So we'll do, we'll take Mr. Roth's suggestion, if you all don't mind, we'll have them ready, and what's been suggested, but of course, I, this isn't my staff, but possibly some of our volunteers, our police volunteers or other volunteers may be able to do the delivery if we cannot. I mean, my staff is willing and able, but sometimes we have so much going on that it's, you know, rush out the door. So we're gonna work at it this way. Does that sound acceptable to the commission? We want to make sure that you get your packets.
Would it only be us able to pick it up? Like, can I send my wife or my daughter or son to pick it up?
I don't mind if, if you don't mind, if they have ID and say, I'm here.
They might even review it for me.
I can't imagine, yeah, right, exactly. I can't imagine that somebody would want your packet besides.
Yeah, because that might make it easy for some of us that I'm also hardly here during the day. I get back here and you guys are already closed, so.
No, and I hear that, and I completely appreciate that, absolutely. So we're gonna work it that way then.
That might work for me, where I can send somebody out to pick it up. Otherwise, I do see it in the email, maybe we can see the PDF on this monitor that I stare at myself in all the time, so I don't know if we can have access to that.
That's not a bad idea either. I know, as a commissioner, we have, we have everything, we're not even, we don't even have paper anymore, we just have it on our monitors.
I know Mr. Dodd used to bring on his tablet. I've been thinking of maybe there was something like that, so that would be allowed. Now we have an IT issue on.
Well, again, thank you for your patience and for your consideration of this, and we'll make sure that this happens. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm just surprised that the US mail, you know...
Well, we had a storm.
Well, even before the storm.
Yeah, I know, I realized that, you.
Yeah, I never get them either for some odd reason, and I haven't had any mail delivered at my house since last week, 3... at my house since last week, Thursday. So...
I get mailed, but just not packets.
Okay. Do you have any matters, Mr. Roth?
Our swales need mowing regularly. There is some high Jamaican grass or whatever, limbing grass or something growing on, that looks like almost sugarcane fields. So whoever's the contractor, I don't know how often we're contracted with them to do it, they need mowing. These things, I understand in an engineering term that the water still flows through the high grass, but they look terrible.
And Mr. Reyes, are you...
I mowed my lawn four times over this storm to make sure it will flow good there, so I want the city to do their part and get whoever's supposed to mow these swales to mow them.
Now, Mr. Reyes, you really, you realize that the majority of swales in the city are these property owners' responsibility.
I'm talking about drainage easements.
Okay, all right.
Big 20-foot drainage easements that you disallow us to put our fences on.
Okay, I'm just, I want to make sure that we're, we're on the same page.
I'll take care of my own driveway swale and all that other stuff, but these easements that you do not allow us to, to put our fences on, although the utility companies allow them, I think some of the new code has made some changes to that, but I'm very upset with the maintenance on those big, large drainage easements, which are the ones that are gonna flow the water out of here. Thank you.
Mr. Roth, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. Any other staff matters?
No, ma'am, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Here we go, folks, we are adjourned. Thank you all.